We'll call the meeting to order and we begin with an invocation.
All right, let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to be together this evening to make decisions and leadership for our community. I pray that you would bless and use the leadership here to use their gifts and talents to bring you glory and for the better enrichment of our community and for our future. Thank you for this opportunity this evening in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
I have a motion to approve the agenda by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hutchinson. Any further discussion? All in favor? All of those same sign, motion passes. Okay, the next item is public comments. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you come to the podium, state your name and address, and speak respectfully. Limit your comments to three minutes. The commission will listen and consider your comments, but no immediate action will be taken at this time. Is there anyone from the public that would wish to comment this evening? Next, we'll move on to the public hearing for 425 West Ninth. The public hearing is now open.
And the resolution attached, here's my recommendation for condemning the trailer house at 425 West Ninth. This airs in taxes for about four years now and it's become very dilapidated and it's unsecure. And the property is getting, and we served several niches on the property. So as far as the public hearing just enter into the record that we advertised this twice and have the public hearing thirty days after the last ad. So if anybody's here to speak at 425 West Ninth.
I have a question, Bruno.
Yes.
Does that include the rush? No.
Just the trailer house.
Just the trailer house.
And uncontrolled growth.
Right.
And the debris, you know, the cleaning up of the lot. But that garage is favorable, it's in good shape, it really is. It could use a facelift, you know, a little siding. It's a roof done late. I think it's got to be rid of. No, this would be just to clean the lawn, clear the trailer house.
Would it be that we would later end up needing to demo the garage? Do you believe? It's not part of this particular?
Who knows what's gonna happen at Sheriff's sale? You know, if that land will eventually end up there, I'm guessing. And to me, it's a pretty good end to a lot. That's the only thing on the block. What I apologize.
No other comments and the public hearing is now closed.
I think next is the resolution, correct?
If it is.
Yeah.
It is for the condemnation. So.
Yeah, this is just a condemnant and I recommend zero days so I can put it out the bid. And that trailer house removal, I'll clean it up soon as possible.
I move to approve resolution 2025-2205.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the condemnation, or sorry, resolution 2025-2205. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Nine. All opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the 2024 audit presentation.
Good evening, Neil Phillips from Jared Gilwin Phillips prepared your intended audit for this year. Let's skip past the letters that are in there and dive straight into the audit authority. Page one, two, and three is the independent art report. The first paragraph talking about what we audited in the city of Concordia as of Assembly 30 verse 2024. The second paragraph talks about an adverse opinion. In the state of Kansas, we follow what they call the regulatory basis of accounting. It's slang is the Kansas cash basis budget laws. Can't spend it if we don't have the money in the fund and we can't spend it if we don't have public approval. That's why a lot of times with these capital projects, you'll see a construction guy come back with a $1,500 change order or something because he knows by law, he can't get paid that additional 50 to 100 unless it's approved in the public forum. So that's why you got that public approval process. Third paragraph down is actually the most important paragraph in the entire document. It's what they call an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting. And what that means to you is based on the testing that we did, we feel like this is a materially accurate representation of what happened during the year and how you ended the year without any further modification. So unmodified, kind of a hard day, concept to think about. Again, slang would be a clean opinion under financial statements, meaning we believe we're materially correct based on the testing we did. The next section talks about basis for opinion. We did follow auditing standards that are generally accepted in the United States of America. We follow the Kansas Municipal Audit Accounting Guide. And because of the federal money that flowed through the city this last year that we spent, we also followed additional level of government auditing standards. So we actually had three layers of testing that we had to do when we did your audit this year. The next section talks about management's responsibilities. The next page continues on with auditors' responsibilities. And then the last couple sections there is talking about the supplemental information. It's telling you that we did audit everything that's in the little wood look here. And then the very last paragraph there on page three talks about the government lobbying standards. Tells you there are other audit reports are out there. Some auditors actually give you two sets, one for the AICPA, which is the US Generally Accepted Accounting or auditing standards, and then one for the government auditing standards. We put them in the same document because they call it a single audit reporting package, so we think it makes better sense to put them together. We'll go through those here in just a minute, but this is telling users of the financial statements that there are those other reports out there. All right, page four and five is where we spend the majority of our time with every audit presentation I do to cities. It's statement number one. Fourth column over is to show users at a glance that we are in compliance with the cash basis laws of the state of Kansas. That's that. We can't spend it if we don't have the money in the fund. Fourth column over there, ending unencumbered cash. If any of those were negative, that would be an apparent violation of Kansas statute. However, as you're glancing down through there, there is usually an exception to the rules. There is an exception if you have a signed grant agreement because you have reimbursement coming or like a signed bond agreement or a signed capital lease agreement. So there's exceptions to the rules. The two that you're gonna see that are negative there, both have grant agreements in place. And so you would have funds coming in in the new year to cover that negative cash in those funds. I like this statement though, because a lot of times the public hears we have $4.4 million in the bank, why are we not doing this? Why are we not doing that? And this statement kind of helps depict that and show those restrictions that we have on some of that cash. Like the top line is the general fund. That's your police, your fire, those general items. You can see we started the year out with $1.8 million. We brought in 5.4, spent 5.8, so actually ended the year with cash carryover of $1,435. Then the next section, they call those special purpose funds because they want you to understand that those monies are restricted for the said purpose. The easy one to explain would be a special highway fund. Every time somebody in the state of Kansas puts gas in their car, the gas tax goes to the state, turns around and comes back to us based on population. We can't spend that money on anything but streets and alleys. We have a water line go bad, a lift station go out. We can't spend it on that. We can only spend that money on streets and alleys. Like the very top one there is special purposes library. Those monies we've collected for the library. We have to pay it out to the library. Can't pay it out to anybody else. So all the fun names kind of help you define, or help define to you to see what, how, and where we can spend that money. Then you've got your bond and interest funds about halfway down, then your capital project funds. And then the very last section there is your business funds. They changed the name of that. It's been five, seven years ago to business funds because they want you and users of the financial statements to understand that we treat our utilities in the state of Kansas as a business. They're a for-profit. Actually, there is a statute out there that says, once you pay all the bills of the utility fund, you can use that money for anything you want to. We gotta be careful in the state of Kansas though, because we are following Kansas cash basis. We gotta be careful because our infrastructure is getting old. So we gotta be able to build up some cash reserves to make sure we have monies to pay for any of those kind of incidents with the infrastructure. Because it is getting older, our infrastructure is. Then at the very bottom, you have some trust funds. So at the, I'm looking at the very total, at the totals line on page five there. You can see we started the year out with $7.3 million. We brought in 11.9, spent 15.1, so actually ended the year with $4,095. Which you're gonna see, the majority of that monies is in that capital project funds in which you had money set aside for capital projects. And you know, you go from a positive $1.2 million down to a negative 22. That's a big swing in cash. However, it was a project that had money already set aside for that said purpose. This statement also adds back in comferences and accounts payable because under Kansas cash basis, it's cash receipts, including expenses that include obligations on accounts payable. So you obligate something in December, but don't pay for it till January, it still counts against our budget and against that cash number. So those are included in expenditures. So we add those back to get to your cash balance. And then down there at the bottom of page five is the reconciliation to your cash accounts. Is there questions about this statement? I think it really talks about the strength of your city when you're looking at some of the funds here. All right, pages six and six through probably seventeen, eighteen, right back in there, the words, the footnotes, or they call them the footnotes, so the words to the financial statements help support the numbers that are up in front. The first one is significant accounting policies. You pick up probably 95% of the audits in the state of Kansas, you're gonna see pretty much this exact same footnote, footnote number one because it's defining what regulatory basis of accounting is. It talks about the basis of accounting, property taxes on the next page, how we create reimbursed expense, budgetary information. We get into information that's specific to you on page 10. And on page 10 is where we talk about that negative cash. Or we talk about the fact that KSA 10-1116 provides circumstances in which you are allowed to go negative and the funds that were listed up front as negative didn't meet that criteria. And then we also make a statement there that management is not aware of any other material statute violations. Then down at the bottom of that page, we are limited in the state of Kansas. Just because we have $4 million in the bank doesn't mean we can do whatever we want with investing wise. We can't go out and put up a stock marker, anything risky basically. This footnote helps define that, so you know where and how we can invest our money. And then down towards the bottom, we actually talk about what they call a concentration of credit risk. In the, as most businesses and individuals, we give our money to a business to hold it for us. Then they clear checks for us. They pay us interest to be able to use that money. They are a business. There is a credit risk that that business could fail. Well, the FDIC insurance steps up and helps us with the first piece of that. And then in the state of Kansas, we have what they call securities pledge to help cover any monies. I always say it's like the mortgage on your house. The bank has put their name on your mortgage. They have no right to your house unless you stop making payments in which they can go grab your property to recoup their funds. Well, the banks have actually did the same thing. They put your name on some of their investments. They've got T-bills, T-notes out there with your name on them. You have no right to those investments, but if the bank would ever fail, close for any reason, you could go out and grab those investments to recoup our money. So we're a stepped up creditor is basically what it comes down to. And that is a requirement by the state of Kansas. The banks do that for us. And we talk about the fact that all of your monies are secured that way. Page number 11 there, footnote number four is the long-term debt or the loans that we have as a city. You can see the top three are bonds that we have. We have general obligation bonds in which we just paid down. We started like the 2014, we started the year out with 855, paid that down by 130. So actually ended the year with our 2014 bonds of $755,000. Then you got some temporary notes about partway down there and then a couple financing leases at the very end for a copy machine and a taser, some police tasers. And so it's basically a way that we can pay for things over time to spread it out over the budgets over a couple of years with those financing leases are. The next page actually shows you the payout of that long-term debt. And you're gonna see that's in the next five years and then it's in five-year chunks after that. You know, all your city planning should be done in five-year phases. So this helps you see the cash that's gonna be going out in the next five years and then five-year increments. So you can kind of plan for the future with cash outlays for long-term debt. All right, I'm not gonna sit and read the rest of these footnotes to you. I might point out at the top of page 15, there's your capital projects. Those are those ones that are specifically approved in the public that we were talking about a minute ago, you know, like those contractors will come back with those change orders. As you glance down through there, you can see that we were required to put this in here to show that you did not go over the authorized amount in any of them. And as you glance down through there, you can see there's quite a few of them that say complete and none of them were over the authorized amount. All right, so with that being said, let's turn to page 18. On page 18, they call it schedule number one. The front one was a statement, the back one is a schedule. Schedule number one is prepared to show users at a glance that you're in compliance with the budget laws of the state of Kansas. That's that public approval I was talking about. Top line is general fund. In 2024, you had a certified budget of $6.4 million. We had some budget credits. So if you get a refund during the year, that extends your budget authority. So you actually had a budget authority of $6.4 million, $6,486. We actually spent $5,892, so we were actually under our publicly approved budget by $594,000 in our general fund. You've got all your funds listed down through there. That very last column, if any of those were over budget, that would be considered a violation of Kansas statute. And as you glance down through there, you can see we were under budget in all of our funds that we had publicly approved. All right, pages 19 through back in the forties is the detailed of fund information. This is gonna follow your state budget format. We do have a prior year column in there, so you can see 2023, like the very top line on page 19 is add to farm taxes. In 2023, we collected $1,173 in property taxes. In 2024, you can see we collected $1,139, but we actually levied $1,172. So that negative $32,872 in that last column, that's our taxpayers that did not pay their property taxes last year. So the hope is, is that $32,000 is gonna come in on the next line down, which is delinquent taxes. We're hoping that they're gonna pay just late, not never. You can see the link with taxes in '23 were $16,200. In 2024 was $12,476. And then we're really hoping that in 2025, it's gonna be around $32,000. But you've got all your funds, all your line items going down through here. You know, your sales taxes coming into here, your franchise fees coming into the general fund. On page 20, you can see total, the total receipts of 5.6 in 2023 compared to 5.4 in 2024. And then you've got your expenses listed out. Again, just in the state format, you've got the personnel services, which would be your salaries and your fringe benefits. I always skipped commodities. Commodities would be anything you can touch. So that's like supplies, anything fiscal. Contractual would be everything else. And then capital outlay is usually those one-time expenditures, piece of equipment that you're not gonna buy very often, a truck. Something that's not gonna be spent on an annual basis. But as you glance down through there, the general fund keeps going for two more pages. You can see bottom of 22 where we ended with unencumbered cash going from the 1.8 to the 1.4. All right, I'm not gonna sit and read each individual fund to you. The numbers that you have before you, you're gonna see when we get over here to the presentation letter here in just a little bit, that we didn't have any adjustments for the audit. So that's a really good thing. That means the numbers that you've seen previously, the management provided to you are the same numbers that are showing up in the audit here. So with that being said, if we flip all the way back to page 49, and that's kind of why I'm going through, just kind of skipping past some of that detail on those funds is because, like I said, those numbers are the same that you've already seen. But nothing in there should be unexpected. On page 49 is the schedule of expenditures of federal, so that's the federal money that you spent as a city this last year. So coming out of the federal taxpayer's pocket rather than the local taxpayer's pocket, which I know we all pay federal taxes, but it's a much larger pocket. We gotta think about it that way. As you're looking down through there, you can see they're listed out by the different US departments, like US Department of Transportation. We've got receipts and a dispersments column in there, but we spent $1,056,000 of US Department of Transportation money, mostly with the airport. That was $1,054,000. US Department of Justice, we spent $65,000 this last year. We spent out the rest of our ARPA monies this last year, where US Department of Treasury monies. Our housing and urban development, we had that fire truck this last, in 2024, which we paid for at $548,000 was spent. And then US Department Agriculture down there towards the bottom is the other piece of that fire truck at 598 for a total of $2.4 million. So I always think that's a positive when we're spending federal monies in the local economy. All right, page 50 and 51 is the first of our reports. Because we followed those government lobbying standards, the first one is looking at internal controls and compliance at the upper level. This is internal controls. This is bank reconciliations. This is reporting, reporting to the commission. This is laws and regulations overall. This report is not an opinion-based report. This is as things came to our attention. Such as we did a bunch of payroll testing with 941s and reporting and that kind of stuff. If we would have found any problems, they would be noted anywhere. Same thing, internal controls, bank reconciliations, cash receiving, cash dispersments. You're gonna read through this report, you're gonna see we had no items that needed to be brought to your attention as a significant deficiency or material weakness in internal controls. Now you take that down a level to what they call the major program level and which we, because of the amount of the airport money, we are required to test some of the federal money. The amount of airport money that you got, that's what we tested as your federal program in which we are required to test compliance and internal controls. And this is a test-based report, so it is an opinion-based report. I'm not gonna sit and read all three pages to you, but it is what they call an unmodified opinion. Meaning we had no problems at that federal level with internal controls or compliance. Page 55 is a one-page synopsis of everything I just told you. The federal government does not want to have to look page by page, so they require this schedule on page 55. The first gold heading that says financial statements, that was the audit report. It was on page one, two, and three. You can see it was called an adverse opinion on GAAP, however, it was an unmodified opinion on regulatory basis. Internal control over financial reporting, that was the audit report that was on page 50 and 51. You can see it says no material weaknesses, no significant efficiencies, and no non-compliance required to be reported. That was the overall section. The next section is the federal awards testing, which was the audit report that was on page 52, 53, and 54. In which you can see again, it says no material weaknesses, no significant efficiencies. It was an unmodified opinion. There were no findings during reported. We do list out that we tested the airport program. And then auditee qualifies lower risk audittee, you are marked as a no. Every entity in the state of Kansas, being cities and school districts, are marked as no because the federal government does not recognize the regulatory basis of accounting. Which really doesn't mean anything to us other than your auditor has to always test at least 40% of your federal funds if you're a non-low risk audittee. So really has no bearing on anything except for how much we have to test. If you're over, this last year was 750, next year it's going up to a million. If you're over a million dollars, we'll have to test at least 40% of your funds. The last two sections there are financial statement findings and federal findings in which you can see they say none, and then prior year findings also is marked as none. All right, there was a separate letter that was in your packets. This was in the board packets only, in the commission packets. This is what we call a letter to those charged with governance. In the past, if we had any difficulties encountered during the audit or any problems, or we had to consult an outside accountant because you're doing something crazy with your records, we would have orally came and talked to you. As you know, we didn't. But we are required to now put it in writing to tell you we didn't have any of those kind of issues. I'm kind of making light of this letter because it's spoiler plate, but it does include a lot of good information that you should read through those two, first two pages on there. The third page on back is what we call the management representation letter, which that's signed between management and the auditors. I like to refer to it as the reminder letter because as management read through it, they should have told me about everything that was in there if it was out there. No material lawsuits, no material conflicts of interest, no problems with the IRS, no problems with the Department of Labor, no problems with any error of granters. Again, I'm making light of it. You can see it's six pages long. There's a lot of representations that were made there. But we didn't have any modifications that needed to be made to that report, so all representations. We just have to show you a copy of what representations were made between the auditors and management. So questions?
An excellent job explaining that.
Thank you. All right, real quick, I just wanna throw out, we did, just as a side note, we did what they call agreed upon procedures for the housing authority. And we issued a report and I don't know if you guys got a copy of it. Did you get a copy of that to them? Okay. As you're gonna go through that, you're gonna see that based on the testing we did, we did not have any problems with that. That was actually agreed upon procedures that was required by rule development. So we took care of that. Had no findings that we came across in any of the testing that we did. So just so you know that, there was no issues at that housing authority. With that text.
Thank you.
I move to accept the audit and authorize the city manager to sign the management representation letter.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to accept the audit and authorize the city manager to sign the management representation letter. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have the ground lease for the Claude County Community College baseball locker room facility.
May I suggest there, so we have some Claude County Community College here to kind of visit with us as well, Chris is here in the audience too. Claude County Community College has raised some funds and would like to build a locker room facility on the sports complex grounds to help support their baseball program. You can see some information has been included in your packet that describes the successes of their baseball program and their intent. The ground lease is in there. The college would own and ensure the facility. They would have exclusive use to the facility. And the city would allow them to have it on the ground rent-free. The city would agree to pay the utilities and continue to do snow removal and grounds maintenance around the area. Terms of the lease include approximately three years or so for the initial term, and then it includes automatic annual renewals unless termination happens by either party upon 30 days written notice. We don't anticipate any either party terminating the lease early. We sat and visited a little bit about that with Amber and her team. We did go ahead and put clauses in here because we know that we're not all gonna be here forever. So 50 years down the road, we wanna make sure that the next folks know what's gonna happen. So for example, we included under termination, if the owner, that's us, wanted to terminate the lease, then we would agree to purchase the building at fair market value. If the tenant agreed to terminate the lease, then they would just be the property over to the city. So either way, it's taken care of and guidance is in here. I guess you guys wanna talk a little bit about the baseball program, kind of tell us where you're at with things?
This is kind of the next project out there. I think we've had an awesome partnership with the city and the high school and it's obviously our home field. It's off-campus, but it's been awesome to be able to go together on projects. This one's really ours though. I mean, we were funding the entire thing. As we've gotten better, we're, you know, we're trying to reach a championship this year. We had three guys drafted this year and we get into better. and, uh, we get into better recruits and, and, uh, we got to keep moving forward. I'm going to be here a while. That's what I want to keep doing, and we've been fortunate to have, uh, financial support from alumni and donors and, and really just an awesome opportunity to, to build a really cool locker room out there. So, um, it's been kind of in the works and, and we've got to a point where we think that we can kind of launch this thing. And so, uh, appreciate you guys as always working with us. I think we've kind of turned that corner of the, of the sports complex into something that Al can be proud of, um, with turf, the fence, and when we get the grass tracked up in the spring, it looks pretty cool there. So certainly not a finished product, product, but I want to just keep moving forward, and this is kind of the next step for us. Um, and also kind of wishes of our donors and, and, and our whole team, as the next thing is to get the locker room done. So, um, yeah, any, any questions on, on the facility or?
Do you have an idea what the cost of the utilities will be during, I saw there's laundry facility too, so I assume. But based on the size of it and the use of it?
So, uh, so we don't do that much laundry. First of all, I think we're going to be in there six months of the year. But we're basically in the building back half of August, September, October, nothing in it, November, December, January, then we're back out there February, March, April, and it's vacant this summer. So I don't anticipate the utilities being crazy. Um, and the laundry facility would literally be like two residential grade washer dryers to, to do it. Uh, I don't have any idea what that would cost, but I think we talked about it probably earlier, it's significant overall.
So who will be responsible to turn off the water in the winter when you're not, when you're absolutely not using it?
Good question. I, I probably would work with Chris and Jared and, um, we talk almost daily as it is, so we just schedule those things, just.
Same time we mineralize the other buildings and bathrooms and stints and all that stuff.
But we'll have a master key, but we won't really have any right to go into the.
The way that it's written there is, it does say that the city would, as the owner, would reserve the right to go in there, uh, for those types of issues. Just not, not use it for any of the right. Chris, you want to speak? I know a question came up from a commission last time about, um, plans for future of the press box. Do you want to?
Yeah, we had talked about that early on, this idea that first came up of redoing the press box and trying to combine it somehow. Um, obviously the layout would probably change if that would have happened, but, you know, and Eric would agree with it. For the locker room, having on the main floor is a big part of it. Uh, so you take that footprint and you put it there and add the, that's the bigger bathroom, because a lot of you ladies know that two stalls isn't enough on that side during big games. Um, so you get that bigger blueprint, and it's really not going to, probably going to fit, um, where the press box would be. Uh, so you would have to go back to a two-story option, which, um, not the most logical one in my mind for what it is, so. Um, so it kind of got away from that, and then, like Eric talked about too, the overall price tag of something like that, it's probably way out of our park. To try to jump in on, honestly.
I think that gray building needs, needs addressed eventually. I think it's definitely, I have bid in for it. I've shared pictures with it, but some things we could do back there, uh, but I think by pulling the locker room out, maybe even eventually pulling some equipment storage out. Um, we shrink that into a project that we could put something decent back there and probably have room to put some seating back behind, some premium seating back behind too. But that's probably down the road. Uh, this, this allows us to pull some of that all out of there, and then we could just drill the press box back. Concessions. Say a little more space. That's down the road, just some vision, but, uh.
So it really, look at it in phases, building this locker room allows us to take the locker room off that top floor. Second phase would be building the shop building for the equipment storage, and the third phase would be the press box area.
We're actually having to use that locker room for last two, three years because I, I also, they have forty guys in that building at this point. If you walk through the floors up top, they, they need a little bit. It's, it was built by volunteers thirty years ago, and it was meant to be temporary at the time. So, um, I haven't allowed our guys up there. We have some lockers. It's a nice space, but we haven't used it, so. Uh, we're one of the few in our ring that doesn't have a space for our guys, and it showed up this year with that three weather delays. We were hosting a regional hearing, had three weather delays, and it was, everybody was scattering, even the umpires had to go scatter and sit in their cars for three hours, uh, and, uh, players were scattering, and, uh, so need, need a, need a good space, and, and, uh, we're prepared for the whole thing. It is a little farmland, so.
I had one question on this lease. Under the terms of the lease, part C, there's a sentence in it that didn't make sense to me. Owner may terminate this lease upon thirty days' notice to the owner.
That would be.
Okay, didn't make any sense. So.
Yes, it should, that sentence should read, owner, owner may terminate lease upon thirty days' notice to the tenant.
It makes more sense.
I think it's kind of back because later it talks about owner may terminate this lease upon thirty days' notice to the owner. Wordsmithing, yeah, some wordsmithing, we'll fix that. Good catch. I just want to express appreciation for the relationship and longstanding partnership that we've had with the city, uh, for the Dorian complex. I think it's really exciting. Uh, we've had a wonderful longstanding part in the way that we've come together. I think it's really beautiful. I was really excited to be at the ball fields last night. Um, just for all of, whether it's the Peewees and, and State District for K eighteen. Um, there were so many people there. It was ran really well, um, so we're really proud to, to be able to partner with you all, and I really appreciate, um, such a good partnership.
I had asked Amy this question, but, uh, the batting cage that exists currently where that locker room will go, um, is going to be relocated to where?
Um, haven't finalized the spot, whether we put it on the first base side or go next to the other one, uh, probably two logical options. Um, versus for space where we are relocating it and we'll put it back up.
And you can reuse all this stuff except the concrete to do that?
Should be able to, you know, hopefully the poles and everything don't break off, but, um, should have a pole and break concrete, or use them.
But I think we're hoping to go to bed as soon as we can and get somebody that wants to build it, hopefully before the end of the year, and something that we can, we can, you know, get into for our season in spring, so.
Well, the timeline, you're really up to contractors too, but we're really, Eric's being the architect again tomorrow. We've gone to fine, ready to go, just going through some details. I'll be working with our, our vice president, Caesar Wood, um, of course Bruno, um, to make sure that everything is, is the way that it needs to be as it goes to out for bid. Uh, we'd like to move as quickly as a contractor can move, um, but we all know we're kind of a diversity of that, the timeline for our, our board. Um, if you all approve this evening, we will bring it to our board on the July twenty eighth meeting.
With that, I would move to approve the ground lease agreement with Claude County Community College at the sports complex for the purpose of constructing a new locker room facility to be owned and used by a cloud baseball program.
So. We have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Lambert's, to approve the ground lease agreement with Claude County Community College. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
I am.
All of those same sign? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And next, we have the minutes of the July second, twenty twenty-five meeting.
We approve the minutes of the July second, two thousand twenty-five meeting.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hash to approve the minutes of July second, twenty twenty-five. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Next, we have, uh, ordinance number thirteen.
We move to approve appropriation ordinance thirteen, second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hash to approve appropriation of, or coordinates number thirteen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes. And next, we have Millen overlay project at the eleventh and Highland Drive.
Mr. Last Thursday, we held a public bid opening for the Millen overlay of eleventh, of a portion of Eleventh Street and a portion of Highland Drive. That would be directly adjacent to the new St. Joseph subdivision. You, I've been included in your packets, the tabulation of that, we had one bidder submit a bid, which is a bit unfortunate. I spoke to two other companies who have done Millen overlay projects in Concordia, and, and they are all busy with larger state highway contracts and didn't feel like they would be able to submit a bid for this project. Um, you can see that in the tabulation, based on five-year averages and, uh, even more recent bid prices. Um, my estimate for the project was a hundred fifty-four thousand and some change. Hall Brothers, uh, Inc. out of Marysville, uh, who was the one bidder who has done a lot of Millen overlay projects in Concordia, submitted a bid for two hundred and five thousand dollars and some change. The noticeably, uh, higher prices are in the main ticket items, which is the actual asphalt itself, which is a reflection of the price, uh, of oil, uh, as well too. So I think some of this is, um, based upon, uh, just how busy asphalt contractors are right now and just who we got. And I think these prices, then, the one submitted by Hall Brothers is also based upon how busy they are. You can see that even if we were to go with them, they weren't planning on starting until like April or May of next year. That's how busy they are with other contracts and prices. Um, after receiving this and having some discussion with city staff, um, my recommendation to you all, and you're, you of course are willing to do, however you choose, my recommendation to you would be to reject this bid. Uh, with the idea of potentially putting this project together with some other projects that the city staff desires to do around town. Um, the benefit of that would be, um, a larger project, which would get interest from more potential bidders. Um, the larger the project usually results in lower unit prices for individual items as well too. So instead of, um, whatever tonnage we had for the asphalt for this, if you were to combine this with one or two other projects, and you tripled the tonnage of asphalt, chances are you're going to get a better unit price for that type of thing. So that would be my recommendations. I, I wish I was recommending something different than that. I wish we had gotten a bid similar to the sewer project we had. Uh, I think this just happened to fall during a time where the state is spending a lot of money on Millen overlays of highway projects and thus have, have, have a lot of those contractors tied up in projects right now. Questions, Matt? The good news is, I didn't give you a chance to ask questions, sorry. But the good news is the pavement of Eleventh Street and Highland Drive in and around St. Joe subdivision is in good shape. The major purpose of this project was to kind of tidy that area up as a result of the construction we did at the new curb and the utility connections in those streets that left the patches. Those are holding up well to daily and local traffic. And I think they will continue to hold up should this get pushed off till, you know, a mid-winter bid or even an early spring bid next year, depending on how other projects might go for the city of Concordia. So this isn't, uh, like an, I don't see this as an emergency, like we need to get out there and do something right away type of thing. I think it will hold up. We will just take these plans, put them on a shelf, we'll add them to something later, we'll bid it again, and see if we can get you some better prices. I think that would be the more responsible way of attacking this, in my opinion.
I really appreciate that recommendation. I think that's a, a nice move and probably allows us to get some more construction done on that subdivision, on that road before having to go through it.
Same thing. This may not be a bad thing to let more heavy traffic take place before we fix it.
Absolutely.
I move to reject the bid from Hall Brothers in order to bid again at a later date.
So.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Lambert's, to reject the bid from Hall Brothers in order to bid at a later date. Any further discussion? All in, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
Thank you. I will notify Hall Brothers and let them know of your decision.
Next, you have the demo program application for two eleven East Fifth Street.
Mayor Commissioner Hannah, third thing to apply, as you know, you have two eleven East Fifth. Accepted into the demo program, and she went out there, bids, actually got three of them. And my recommendation, as you know, this was a house of birth, she asked for this opportunity, she purchased property, and she lives next door. And I would recommend that we accept that. It's cheaper for everybody. And, uh, based on the iron, was it ironworks? Yeah, Iron Valley Construction. I did talk to Crockett, and he understands everything. So the eighty-two fifty, based on eighty-two fifty, and like, really good. Questions?
So, uh, the project plans to complete within five working days. Once notice, uh, to proceed is received and utilities disconnected. So what, uh, that's a pretty quick tile line.
Pretty quick.
That's, that's good to hear.
We'll see. I've been promised the money before.
The other question is the, for the garage, for the, the things that, or I'm sorry, the, I guess you call it mother-in-law quarters. It's going to be left. Um, is there any permits yet, or what's the timeline for permits for that to be?
I should be a permit for that, because there's, there's some cosmetic work, basically.
Like the when, what was, I said window siding?
About the sinks and bathtub and all that, because I think your plan is to have accessory storage.
Yeah. If, if, later on, um, I wish to have water back there, because it would be something like that, making water. But I'll, I'll get that done. As a matter of fact, I've been working on the lot already. As soon as I got over there, I've been working on that there, clearing it out and all that kind of stuff. So I'm a little young with getting that done too.
Do you plan on doing the, uh, the cosmetic step to that shed, that whatever is needing done, whether it's replacing broken window or siding? And you have a timeline on that?
Um, no, not quite, because I'm still clearing it out and stuff like that, so I got to figure it out.
Do you imagine that will be done yet this year?
Oh, absolutely. I don't want to look in a mess.
You're talking about the fixing, not, not the remove.
Right.
I move to accept the fire damage structure at two eleven East Fifth Street into the demo program and authorize the city manager to sign the contract with the owner based on the lowest bid of eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from Iron Valley Construction, second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hash, second by Commissioner Wentz, to, uh, accept the fire damage, the bid for the fire damage structure at two eleven East Fifth Street, uh, from Iron Valley Construction. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the manager's report.
Mayor Commissioners, we had a good visit from the Department of Commerce last Wednesday. Thank you. We've forgiven the, the welcome there. Uh, it was a community impact tour, and they got to see our fire truck do kind of a hands-on, some, I'm clear of the ladders that went up, so I appreciate the fire departments, uh, bringing that down. Uh, Brett Cunningham had his staff bring the trailer over there and kind of demonstrated and told a little bit about the upgrades to the free wifi at the front plaza and various parks. And all those were due to some of the programs and budgets that Commerce made available to our communities. We really appreciate that. Uh, the Commerce reps that were here spoke very positively of our community and really appreciated the way that we've been good stewards of the program money that they've awarded to us, and they indicate they really appreciate communities that continue to do that with the programs and making them effective for community members. That's been really good. So thank you also for your willingness to support those programs as we bring those requests to you. This last week, we also submitted the pre-application for the blueprint to build. Uh, Brenna Gilliland Community Foundation, um, has been taking the lead on that application. We did receive word back that the application's been reviewed. They have a couple clarification questions, so we have a call with Commerce tomorrow to provide that clarification and hopefully advance our application to approval to be ready to submit the final application, um, a little bit later. Finally, it's fair week here in town, so if you haven't had a chance, please go to Fairgrounds and support the, the four-H kids and everyone that's submitted, uh, class projects out there that are, uh, being judged right now. It's been interesting to watch on Facebook to see how well everybody's done and the different types of products that are out there. Really appreciate that opportunity for our kids here in this, this community as well. After we answer any questions, we have.
Next, we have staff reports.
Fire Commissioner, good evening. We're gonna have to go at our department meeting for the fire department. Rita Goodman, she was the coordinator for the whole traveling wall deal that went off the armory. She came to present us with a donation. The donation was twenty-five thousand. Talking with her back when she was first getting all this organized, she asked me to be a contact point for the fire departments within the whole county. So that amount of money doesn't go just to us. It's kind of for everybody and I just kind of helped her coordinate all of that. We had requested quite a bit more. She said, just whatever you think you might be able to spend. So we did ask for forty-five thousand to go for some specific equipment. She was only able to do twenty-five thousand, but it's still awesome that she was able to. Talking with the other departments around the county, the first thing we're going to use the money for is to buy a SCBA air compressor. It's more properly suited to our department than what we have. That compressor is then going to be given to Miltonville Fire Department. They just don't have as much use as we do consistently for it. So they were willing to accept that as their portion of the money, so that their portion of the money will go back into the pool. That compressor that we're going to get is going to be donated to us by Hutchinson Community College. And then we've got a company out of Oklahoma that's going to refit it a little bit and do the install for us. They feel like that compressor should last easily ten years with just a little bit of proper maintenance. So then that leaves anywhere from fifteen to seventeen thousand, depending on the the work they have to do to that compressor. And then that will be split between the five of us evenly. So we'll be looking about four thousand dollars apiece to spend on whatever equipment we want. We haven't decided exactly what we're going to get, but we're hoping to kind of coordinate and maybe be able to buy four or five of the same piece of equipment and maybe stretch those dollars a little bit further. But we'll see what happens. If we can come up with something good, if not, we'll probably just write a check to each department around the county and spend the money out there if I do. Can you comment about that?
It's very generous donation. Very appreciated. Nice that you guys all work together to spend the fun to come up with a plan as well.
Hopefully we can find something to stretch those dollars. We'll see.
On the chair, information actually, Amy, David, I didn't even say too much about it. But as Amber earlier was talking about, the big crowds we had last night, there's a new technology that is able to track that a little bit more closer. On the Tuesday last year, when when we host Pee Wee and K eighteen on the same day, there was over five thousand people, I think is what they said, at the complex. So as you may have seen throughout the summer, it's been the place to be on most nights. And then the culmination of two tournaments being played on the same day, four different fields going, over five thousand people in one location to Concordia, so a lot of those were out of town teams. So so I stopped that number. It blew me away. I didn't think it was that high either. So that was, you know, for cool information, I assumed last night was just as much, so.
We did a demonstration of a software called Placer AI and it's serviced them. And we did the demo demo demonstration with the with Cloud Corp. And it was neat to see, able to see the data that they could provide. They can tell you, they take a sampling, they follow cell phone data anonymously. And then they can extrapolate that out to cell phones that don't allow that kind of tracking. But you can see where people went before they went to the sports complex and after. And you can see how many people were there. You can see where they came from, where their home normally is, which is really interesting and scary at the same time. We can see a a lot of value in that. Again, to be able to demonstrate the value that having hosted those tournaments provides and then the impact to the community and where people stay and how far they travel from can also help us to be able to know how to communicate different things to different people to make sure that they get the most out of their experience here.
And semifinals and semifinals are tomorrow and then the final championship games are Friday. What's coming out, it's been a lot of good ball this week, so.
No other staff reports, so we'll move on to Derek Fisher comments.
I have three roses and a thorn. So three roses first, the baseball partnership we've heard about. Just very appreciative of them raising that money. And so there wasn't that ask for the that big partnership. One, it was kind of a lesser of a partnership. Very appreciative there. The audit, Amber, as always, so appreciative of the work you do because it's so nice to have a clean audit. And then I've seen a lot of homeowner projects going on around town, a lot of painting of houses, a lot of just work to keep our housing stock in good shape. So appreciative there. And then the one thorn, I've seen a lot of little guys on golf carts and I've had some complaints about driving. And so maybe just a reminder out there that, or maybe we could do a reminder about needing to be a driver's license if you're going to be running on city streets, just so, you know, one guy doesn't ruin it for everybody. Or God forbid, somebody gets hurt, so. That's it.
This confidential business stuff.
I move to City Commission recess into executive session to discuss confidential business that trade secrets of a business subject to KSA seventy-five four three nineteen before with Amy Lang and Justin Farrell in attendance in every convened at the City Commission Chamber at six thirty-eight P M.
Second.
Very much my Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hash to recess into the executive session. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
No action was taken.
This time I would make the same motion to. I would move that the City Commission recess into executive session to discuss confidential business that are trade secrets of a business subject to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen before with Amy Lang, Justin Farrell, Gray Conway, Lady Tifo in attendance in a reconvened at the City Commission Chamber at six fifty P M.
The motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Wentz. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, same sign. Motion pass. No action was taken. Oh, I didn't wait for everybody. Still coming in. No action was taken.
I would move to the chair.
Mention by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hatch to during the meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Good night.